I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, June 12th, 2023, and the time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all district stakeholders. Dr. Hellman, we have some items in the table file.
Yes, we have several items in the table file this evening. There is an updated version of the superintendent's operations and strategic plan update. There are several items in the consent agenda for personnel, including appointments, increased, decreased, change in assignment to correction, and a resignation. We also have the enrollment report as well. That is the table file for this evening.
If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Jeff, second. And by Jenny, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Do we have anyone sign up for public comment? Okay, then we will go on to item four, which is announcements and recognition.
Yes, we have several here this evening. So the first piece is we want to congratulate the class of 2023. Yesterday, I'm not sure we could have ordered the weather to be better with the exception, a little bit less wind, right? But we will always take 70 degrees and sunny with some wind versus 95 or 45, right? So we're grateful for that. 285 graduates yesterday, really just a celebratory event. And so thrilled for these students who are stepping forward into a world armed with a Northfield education that we hope prepares them wherever life leads them, right? So very exciting. And thanks to board members for their participation in the ceremony yesterday. I also have a few activities related announcements. So these are from Activities Director Bubba Sullivan. He just wanted to report that choir, band, and orchestra all had successful and very well-attended spring concerts. And recognizing that the orchestra concert was the final one for retiring orchestra director Paul Owlesley. We had a number of students who were successful in the track and field component recently at sections. And so we want to honor these athletes who were in the state track and field meet Toby Gra, Kamarian Grant, Amber Mahal, Jackson Jertie, Simon Lippert, Braden Brecky, and that Braden took ninth in the 100-meter dash at state. And Kamarian took sixth in the high jump. So both of those earned all state honors. So congratulations both to Braden and to Kamarian for their success at the state meet. And the rest of those student athletes in track and field for making the state competition. We also want to congratulate girls golfer Junior Emerson Garly. She won the individual section meet title by five strokes. And so will represent us at state, which is going to be tomorrow on Wednesday at Bunker Hills. And then finally, we want to congratulate the baseball team for a great season. That it was a very exciting finish for them where they lost their first game. They clawed their way back. They beat Byron. To bring it down to one game to win, whether to go to state or not. And unfortunately, they lost eight to seven in extra innings. So quite a season for Raider baseball. So we're really pleased for the success that these student athletes and of course, that our musicians had this spring. And we congratulate them. And that really kind of is, when Emerson has done it, it'll bring our spring seasons to a close. So those are our announcements for this evening.
Very nice. Anyone else have a comment, announcement, prize?
I also wanted to echo the complimentary comments about the graduation yesterday. And I want to take a moment quick to say thank you to Cory for facilitating the last meeting. And the flowers that the board sent to my mom's service were beautiful. So thank you for that. And of course, just so grateful for all the investment on the part of our high school staff into my daughter's education. I'm just exceptionally proud to be a part of this district and for her to have graduated. And I also wanted to add a comment about just how as a former educator, I also understand how challenging the classroom situation can be, but just equally rewarding. And I wanted to just say regarding policy 810, again, just apologies for the the timing on that, board members and school staff and the initial lack of input. But we're on a good path now. And Dr. Hellman has finished his listening sessions. And I believe we'll have something even greater for all. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to items for discussion and reports. And we have a nursing proposal Dr. Hellman will present. We will be asked to take action on this proposal July 10.
Thank you. So what I want to share with you is that we are proposing for your consideration adding a year-round, full-time building nurse at the Northfield Community Education Center. The reasons that we are bringing this forward, when we think about our student support approach in the district, we have long been ahead of many other districts where we have a full-time school psychologist and social worker at each school. We have worked through where we added, this board codified the addition of three full-time guidance counselors at the secondary level. So when we look at our status in terms of student support across the district, those areas, we could always use additional support there, but we feel that we are in a fairly good place there with those FTE. Health services isn't often thought about in that vein, but it really is part of student support services. And when we look at the area of supporting students over the past couple of years, that has been the most strenuous and the most stressed on our capacity, it has been health services. So we have, every school district is required to have a one licensed school nurse. That in our district is my Muna Tora Kida, and she also then serves as the building nurse at the NCEC. So dual role, district-level responsibilities, and also serves at the NCEC. Each of our other buildings have a licensed nurse. Many districts don't have that. They have a health aide or something to that effect. But this board over the last 20 years on a number of occasions have affirmed the desire to have a medically trained individual in those health offices. So as we have looked at what we are seeing across the system with complicated health circumstances with our students, give you by way of example. Toward the end of the school year at two different buildings, we had two new diabetic students. When we have a young child who has become diabetic, there's a tremendous amount of support that needs to happen. Family, classroom teacher, school office, because there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into making sure we understand what the protocols, we're teaching the parents, the parents are teaching us. And that has been exacerbated by our inability to recruit and retain nurse substitutes, which is not a shock when you read anything in the newspaper about nursing services across the state, about how even in hospitals and clinics, they are taxed. So what happens is we've had, we've had some absences or we've had some vacancies at one of our buildings. So it is the shuffle that happens. So if we are without a nurse at one building, we will often have one nurse cover two buildings for that day. We will try to seek to get a substitute nurse, but it's even difficult if you can get one, right? Because they have to be brought up to speed on the medical conditions of the students in the building. There's always information that they are going to need. So as we've done this, we're going to move a nurse to this building to cover these two buildings. In variably, there's then a gap left behind. So as we have looked at what are the areas of student support where we have the greatest strain, it is in our health services. The reason we're bringing you this proposal is that in the omnibus bill that was approved by the legislature and signed by the governor, there is a categorical aid now specifically for student support personnel. And you are required to spend these dollars on new positions. Just a term that Director of Finance Val Murdersdorf and I look at regularly is with this categorical money that is coming from the state, are we allowed to do something that we call supplant? So are we able to take that new categorical aid and use it to pay for something that we have already been paying for as a district? In this case, we do not have positions that we analyze are eligible for any kind of supplanting. You're not supposed to supplant. There are some circumstances. If you had a position that was at risk for being cut because of the falling off of the COVID relief money. In those cases, you could use this new categorical aid to fund that. As we have looked at what we have done, we don't have positions that fall into that category. And so our recommendation is that this is a use it or lose it, right? So if we don't use these dollars, they go back to the state. We have a need in the first two years of hiring the, this new nurse at the NCEC, we would be subsidizing it a bit, right? Because it's a certain amount of money. It's $11.94 per people in the 23-24 year, $17.08 in the 24-25 school year. Then it takes a large jump in 25-26 to $48.73. So by the time we get to 25, 20, 25, 26, not only will the new categorical funding cover everything on this particular proposal, there will actually be additional dollars that would allow us to consider supporting students with another position in some other way. So you might ask why year-round? The reason that we're looking at something year-round is as we have seen over the past few years, we have a number of summer programs, as you are all aware. And these summer programs have students who invariably, year to year, need some kind of health support. Now, some years we're able to see about getting one of the building nurses to be able to cover the summer, but that's not consistent. It's not hardwired. We don't have that same piece every year. So by having one full-time, year-round position, that position would be different than the rest. The NCEC program is also the only program that we have that operates year-round in its regular methodology. But that person would also be able then support the summer programs. So as we looked at this, as we look at it with Director of Special Services Cheryl Hall, incoming Director of Special Services Sarah Pratt with my Muna, our district nurse, we feel this is the area where we are most stressed when it comes to student support personnel. When I shared this proposal with our building nurses, the universal feedback was that would be great, right? Because it would free them from a number of responsibilities. The district nurse would now have the ability to do more training because the district nurse would not be tied to a particular building. It would also allow for some additional support if there was a situation at a building that required that, got a medical situation that needs additional support. It would also allow that district nurse to be one of the primary substitutes, already knowing all of the systems, already having access to all the records that are appropriate. So there's a number of different positive components to this. The Director of Special Services has also been responsible for some health services administration. This could also relieve our special services administration from a small portion of their job duties. Again, something that we think lifts a number of different boats in the district. So that is the proposal. Again, I'm not asking for any approval tonight. We may even, what we've listed as the costs are what we believe would be the maximum cost that the district could incur. We are having some discussion even amongst the health personnel right now. What level of licensure would be required for this position, right? Right now, for a regular building nurse, we are seeking an RN. There is some discussion that we might be able to look at something with an LPN. So that those items can be worked out over the next few weeks. But we wanted to get this to you today so that you'd have the opportunity to hear about it. Also, if there is, if there is not substantial opposition, just in a straw poll about this concept is once we finalize in the next couple of weeks what we think those qualifications for the position would be, I'd ask your permission to post an anticipated opening. If we post an anticipated opening, we are not required to make the hire. And we would not do any interviewing or any of that kind of thing until after the board would approve it. If you didn't approve it, we would just take that posting down and notify that the position wasn't going to move forward. The advantage of having an anticipated opening at this time of the year is that we would at least start to develop a pool. So if the board were to approve this in July, we could begin to interview then fairly quickly after that and be able to get someone on board in that early August timeframe, early to mid-August by the time that the school year starts. So this is the concept behind this. The greatest need that we see from a student support personnel right now is the health offices. There is categorical money that can pay for a chunk of the salary and benefits for year one and year two, and then completely cover it in year three and beyond. And we think that it also does some relief of a number of other positions within the system that frankly, we are concerned about because they are also hard to find positions. And if they chose to go elsewhere, we have some concerns about whether those pools would be really deep or not. So that's the proposal that we have. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hellman, for all the detail. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Ben?
Just a quick question. What qualifications would that position have in posting?
So those are the, that's one of the things that we're finalizing right now. The minimum, our typical requirement is that you have an RN. That's what we, if we were hiring for any of the, the, some of the initial feedback that we have as we've been developing this piece since having the new funding codified, is that it, it might not necessarily be necessary to have an RN in that case. It could be possible to have an LPN, which we would have to do some HR work to create a slightly lower rate of pay, et cetera, for that position compared to the others. That is still being determined. Unfortunately, because we only have one board meeting in June, that's why we are here with you at this, at this point. We just wanted to get it in front of you with some, you know, we're giving you what we think is the maximum expenditures that the district would have. Minimum would be an LPN. It very well still could end up being an RN as required.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Very good. Thank you, Dr. Hellman. Okay, item B is our policy committee recommendations. Dr. Hellman will present the policy committee's recommended updates to several handbooks.
So I'm going to start just by giving an overview, a very brief overview that when you look at the Kid Ventures, the Hand in Hand, and the Early Ventures handbooks, when you look at the strike-through underline, there are very few changes. And we would consider them mostly to be modest language changes. There's nothing that is substantially changing the rules that are governing those programs. And I just want to remind you that we're bringing those three to you or continue to work on moving the, the building level handbooks to our online version. But these three programs are governed a little bit differently. And we feel that the individualized handbooks are still appropriate. They're very similar to what they were last year. You'll notice that there's very minimal changes. There are a few, but nothing that is substantial. The Student Citizenship Handbook, again, in general, I would say fairly modest changes in terms of the, you'll see some basic language changes. There are not substantial changes to any of the items that are specific to disciplinary occurrences. You'll notice we're working on some language. So it used to say first offense, second offense, et cetera. We're modifying that language to say first occurrence, second occurrence, third occurrence, just to try to update that language. Very little of the discipline associated with this has been changed. We've done a few things like, for example, if you take a look at bullying, we did a couple of different changes there just to call out, for example, that the act occurs repeatedly. That's one of the key parts of the bullying definition. It was buried in another sentence. We wanted to call that out more specifically. You will also see that we have some modifications in terms of our building principals who look at this every year noticed that bullying and harassment can sometimes be very similar in terms of the transgressions that have happened. But yet there was a difference between the consequences for bullying and harassment. So what you're going to notice is that the consequences for bullying now really reflect the similar consequences for harassment. So the most substantial piece is looking at that in grades six through eight and nine through 12, you'll see, or six, excuse me, six through eight and nine through 12, we're aligning that to be similar. So the one to three-day suspension. The third occurrence at the middle school goes to a five to 10-day suspension, or excuse me, three to five-day suspension. That is, is it more substantial than the one to three initial? And then you'll see that we've modified the nine through 12th grade to be a five to 10-day suspend, five to days, 10, five to 10-day suspension and possible recommendation for expulsion. So this now mirrors the harassment responses. So that's one of the areas that was changed. You also notice that we're working, anytime that there's a policy referenced in the Student Citizenship Handbook, we're providing a link directly to that policy. Of course, very few people are using this as a printed page anymore. So we're trying to make it as, as user-friendly as possible. I do also want to point out that in the cellphone components, we are now calling out as well incidents involving unauthorized photography. So this was something that was inherent prior where our administrators were able to talk about it, but it was more within the context of the misuse of the cellphone technology. What we are looking at is for students who misuse or who are doing unauthorized photography or recording, that that is a separate part of that that could incur a different level of response. And we've just, with the proliferation of some of social media challenges and things like that, we want to have this very explicit. So if we're talking with parents about it, that we are able to say, this is exactly in the Student Citizenship Handbook where this is happening. And we know that it's, we haven't had a ton of it here, but there's been enough. And we know that it's been an issue across the country. So we want to make the Student Citizenship Handbook as explicit as we can so that when parents are looking at it, when their student has had an occurrence of something that violates the Student Citizenship Handbook, that they can, okay, I can generally understand what's going to happen. Or if I'm a parent who wants to know what happened to a different student who we perceive have committed that occurrence, we can share with them. This is what the policy says about how those are handled. So in general, those I would say are probably the largest changes, again, really modest comparatively, but I'm just pointing out that those are the most, what I think are the most substantial changes within the document. And I'd be happy to take any questions about it at this time. The one piece I do want to share is that, two more items. There could still be some changes between the time that we present it tonight and the time that you approve it. By way of example, there is language in the Early Ventures Handbook about free school meals. The NCEC will qualify for the free school meals because it's a program that is in a, operated by a school district. We are going to have to do a little bit different language there, some updated language that we are learning as the state is beginning their operationalization of those meals. There's going to have to be another change in that handbook. The other part is that, as you'll hear in my legislative update in a few minutes, there are some additional changes in terms of discipline that are came through state legislation. We think that we are fairly in line with those, but as we see some of the recommendations from the School Boards Association as the lawyers begin to take the legislation and turn it into operational language for us, we may have to make a couple of other changes within the Student Citizenship Handbook. But we anticipate having those for you by the time we meet in July. So those are just the last two comments I would make.
Thank you so much. Board members, any comments or questions? Hey, Jeff?
Historically, I guess it's a broad question, from the state and school districts, you know, the term bullying and harassment can be very subjective. So what definitions are you really going off of with that?
So I think if you take a look at the bullying component, we are using, I'm getting to it right now. So it would be on page, it spans pages 11 and 12. So my recollection is that this, the definition is coming right from our policy, which is aligned with state statute, which says that bullying is defined as behavior that is intimidating, threatening, abusive, sorry, my, abusive or hurtful conduct. It's objectively offensive, involves an imbalance of power or materially and substantially interferes with a student's education or ability to participate in school activities, and occurs repeatedly. So that is the definition of bullying. And when you look at the definition of harassment, which is on page 16, what you're seeing is racial, gender, religious, age, disability, sexual orientation, marital status, and public assistant harassment and violence is defined by district policy for, as defined by policy 13 is prohibited. So that policy lays that part out. And then the rest of it goes through overriding. So harassment includes all forms of racial, religious, and sexual harassment. It goes on to further define. So in some cases, it is both, right? In other cases, it, they are different, but we are trying to align what those consequences are.
Thanks so much.
Final follow-up question. Where do we have or mandate, I should say mandate, suggest or conflict resolution? Because what we want, if you have problem, if there's problems with bullying, harassment, it's like, how are we implementing positive systems of teaching kids that aren't able to get along or choosing not to? Conflict resolution, or for the fact of everybody, how to handle conflict?
Yeah, that's a great question, Jeff. And what I would say is that that is what our staff does every day inherently, right? So as with elementary students, we are always working with them to iron out their issues so that they are learning from those cases. And in fact, our second step curriculum, you know, is that's one of the things that that works on over time. We also have a segment of the Student Citizenship Handbook that does talk about restorative practices. And that idea of restorative practices is how can we work through those things if we're able to in a way that's mutually beneficial so that people learn and move forward together? So what I would say is our teaching staff every day are teaching those pro-social behaviors. And not everything is a transgression, right? Not everything would count as an occurrence for the Student Citizenship Handbook. Student Citizenship Handbook serves as our discipline policy and it's intended to outline when a violation has occurred, this is how we handle it. Everything else is about teaching those pro-social behaviors to avoid, you know, getting to this point.
Thank you.
And that piece on restorative practices looks like it's on page four. And any other questions or comments? Great. Amy?
So I have comments on each of the handbooks, minor ones with the first two handbooks. But I thought I would start with Early Ventures. And just kind of from a reading perspective, on, on page four, it says, under enrollment, it lists preschoolers starting at 33 months of age. And then on page five, it lists preschoolers as starting at age 36 months.
Okay, we'll check that. Thank you.
Yeah, make that more consistent. And then on page six, oops, I got to get into myself. There's a part that says under changes that people would pay 50% of the contract for the fall during the summer. And the part I thought was unclear about that was, does that amount that they pay get applied to their fall expenses? Or is that amount paid only to hold that spot? And, and it's, they don't get anything for it other than their spot being held. And I thought that was unclear.
Val, can you clarify that last part?
Yeah, the 50% is to hold their spot for the summer. So it does not get applied to their fall tuition invoices.
So my suggestion is just to make that a little clearer because I think I'm hopeful, you know, that, that it seems like they're paying something for nothing. So they might start assuming that that's going to go toward their fall, their fall expenses.
I think that the communication that has gone out to families is pretty clear, but we can definitely clean up that language to make it a little more understandable to what's currently happening.
Okay. Then I, if anybody else has Early Ventures comments, I'd be happy to stop and let continue with the sample.
Have a comment on the Early Ventures Handbook?
Okay, so now heading on to Hand in Hand. This was just a couple, this is one question. On page four, it mentions co-taught and consult classrooms. And I figured out co-taught, those ones that have some of the special education students in it, but I could not figure out from the context what the consult classrooms are.
Where, which?
The page four.
Page four. Is it new? Oh, here we go. Yep, at the bottom.
Right. Our co-taught classrooms are capped at 18 students and our consult classes are capped at 16 students. And I couldn't, the consult classes are not referred to anywhere else in the document and they're not defined anywhere.
Yeah, and I don't have a definition for you tonight. I will get that for you, though.
I just thought it would be good to have it in the document. Any, that's my one comment on Hand in Hand. So I'll open the floor up for other Hand in Hands.
Comments? No. Okay, go for it.
Okay, well, now to the Citizenship Handbook, I have several comments on that. I think this is the most important thing we're asked to read every year. And I think it's really important that we pay close attention to it and try to understand it. And in general, I'm going to talk, just a general things, and then I'll talk about more detail. I, we talked very briefly about cyberbullying at one point, I believe on page seven, under harassment. But I, I would like to actually see more in this handbook about cyberbullying other than a brief mention. Because I mention, because I, it seems like that's probably something that gets dealt with a lot. And we need to not just sort of, oh, by the way, cyberbullying is included. We need to flesh that out a bit more. Then I had a question on page 12, under burglary. When burglary is defined as intent to commit a crime. And I'm wondering about what happens if a student enters a high school, let's say, and they're not really being malicious, they're not intent on vandalism. They just want to do a prank, which won't hurt anybody, but they really shouldn't be in the high school. Is that covered under burglary? I, I couldn't figure out what, where we, where we would cover that and how we would.
It's covered under trespassing.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see trespassing.
Yep, it's on page twenty.
Okay, maybe I wasn't reading as closely by the time I got to page twenty. Then on page thirteen, we talk about dishonesty. By the way, I love that this is alphabetical. And I think we should add something to that section about A I and chat G P T and how that since it's a big thing that we'll be facing more and more of, we need to address that now and how that relates to.
So I've done a lot of thinking about that. And my recommendation is, is not to do that. And the reason is that that is what we are talking about today. Chat G P T, I mean, and so if I use chat G P T, first of all, I think we should be teaching how to use chat G P T appropriately, because the genie is out of the bottle, right? This is going to be part of people's lives for the rest of their entire lives. And so if I misuse technology, chat G P T is just the latest thing, right? At one time it was Wikipedia, it was, there's a long list of things that have been problematic for students to, in fact, you read a, a book by Bruce Colwell. Early, there's a story about early in the nineteen hundreds, how some students broke into the school office to steal the master copies of the tests, right? So I think that what my recommendation on this would be to keep it broad. Because if I have used chat G P T to be academically dishonest, or I have used Wikipedia, or I've used something else, it isn't about the tool, right? It is about the action. And so I, that's where I get worried about anytime we start to put something specific that could timeout, if that makes any sense.
And I, I get that, which is why I also said A I, trying to, trying to be broader. And I just think we don't have enough in there. Maybe we can be general by adding a little bit more, a little phrase in there. It's just think about it and see if anything makes sense. Because we, I suspect that's something we'll be dealing with in the future.
Right, we're dealing with it now.
Okay.
Amy, on the chat G P T, did I say that right? Chat G P T. Were you thinking it's a kind of cheating? Or do you feel like it's entirely something else that falls under dishonesty?
No, I, I don't think. So chat G P T, as Matt said, is not in and of itself a bad thing. There's lots of positive, good uses of it, but it can be used to write a paper. So what if someone completely writes their paper from chat G P T? And that's discovered. It's not plagiarism per se, it kind of is. And I don't think we really even address using technology to circumvent, you know, creative work, something, you know, we don't, we don't address it at all. And that's what I'm looking for.
I, for me, I think it falls under dishonesty and so I'm comfortable not seeing it. But I, I hear what you're saying in terms of being broader and bringing it, you know, to more modern language, which includes artificial intelligence. How do, do other board members want to make a comment on that? Ben?
Yeah, I think, I mean, getting language specific could be problematic for a variety or for a number of reasons. I think Matt, you raised a good point. It's how do we use these tools instead of refer to tools even kind of A I? I mean, there could be legitimate uses of generative A I for some of the, the classwork, classroom work, whatever you're trying to do. I think it just gets back more to what are the expectations in terms of what happens in the classroom? You know, from a teacher's standpoint, I mean, clearly communicating those in terms of what, what they want or what's appropriate. Don't have it write your paper for you. That could be a clear expectation, but you could use it to, you know, help you generate an outline of what your paper could include. Though, I mean, I think these are, it's just a, another tool that our, our students will have access to and continue to have access to.
And I think you were getting at it's discovered so that it wasn't upfront, you can use it for part of your assignment, but that it's discovered and then how we deal with that.
Well, right, because obviously we want students to be creative and to do their own writing. But I think a lot of people use chat G P T to provide a structure or give them ideas, which they then use as a springboard for their own creativity. And I think that's a good use for it. It's when it's taken in its entirety, entirety that it's a problem.
And I do think it, if I may, I also do think that this is, if you think about it, this did not even become part of our lexicon really until probably December, January, February. So I do think what's interesting is I think we are so new in this evolution of the new technology that I think the first thing that we go to understandably is the dishonest submission of something that wasn't our writing in an assignment that our own writing was expected. We've dealt with that for, in fact, we subscribed for a period of time to a piece of software called turnitin.com. Because, you know, students could download papers from other, you know, parts of the internet and submit it. Now, turnitin.com could check that and could give you a probability of plagiarism harder, right? With the new artificial intelligence components. But what I think is just interesting is that, and this is why I think we have to be very thoughtful about this. Because it is about dishonesty and not following what the assignment was. You are starting to see where companies are leveraging chat G P T and that kind of technology, where they're hiring people to say, we need to know people, we need to have people on our staff who can write good prompts. Because I'm not going to have somebody who needs to write thirty pages on this topic. I need someone who knows how to ask the artificial intelligence the right question so that it can generate the content for us. So it is, it is moving so fast. I think what we can do is certainly think through about how do we operationalize it? And maybe there is a term or two or something that we modify. But at the end of the day, I think there's two parts where I think, number one, I do think that it is covered under cheating, right? If, if I had been asked to submit my own work and I submit the computer's work as opposed to mine, in my mind, that's no different than if I had my neighbor down the street write it for me. But I, what I'm hearing you say Amy is we need a point of emphasis on this so that students are being taught the appropriate ways to use it and also that when not to use it.
Yes.
Yep. Jeff?
Well, I think that begs the, the larger question of kind of almost like ethics, you know, with A I and, and more on a specific use, you know, you know, behavior. And, and that's going to be constantly changing. I mean, it's like anything else. There's some really cool stuff that you could use A I for, for education. But yeah, what, what is cheating, what is advancing cognitive learning and, and that? So that's, that's going to be an ongoing, ongoing thing.
And this is an area as well where I would like to get some feedback from our staff, you know, about how they are seeing this start, because there are clearly people who have used it already, right? And it is difficult, it can be difficult to, to detect. What I encourage you is if you ever, if you ever have actually used it, it's typically not written in the voice that you would typically write, you know what I mean? And so I think that that's, it is an, I appreciate you bringing it up Amy, because we need to talk about it. It is a part about, this is now part of digital citizenship, right? About how are we presenting the information that we have produced? So even if we don't end up with it in detail in the student citizenship handbook, I can assure you that it's something that we're going to be talking about and it may make its way into it at some point. We will look at how we can try to include it in a way that is more about the action rather than the technology.
And that's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for a paragraph. I'm looking for a mention of it.
And I think maybe it's just that adding more technology.
We will take a stab at it.
I'm not done, but I'm, I'm happy to defer to someone else for a few minutes if anyone else wants to jump in. All right, I will continue. So I was looking at the, on page eleven, we have assault physical. And on page fourteen, we have fighting, which seemed very similar to me. And I thought we could use some better differentiation between the two. Or maybe just have one listing if they're the same thing.
So this is one of those cases where I think they feel similar, but that they are different. So I would characterize something fighting. Let's say that it's two middle school students who are arguing at the lunch table over something. And they get into a case where they fight, right? Maybe they push each other, they punch each other or something, but it is a typical school fight, right? Nothing that is where people are harmed or things like that, that, but it's a fight. Assault is a little bit of a different animal in the fact that if you read that definition of assault, there's also a part with an assault that carries a legal component. And so when you see the assault physical, acting with intent to cause fear in another person of immediate bodily harm or death, intentionally inflicting or attempting to inflict bodily harm upon another person. This is not something that is both parties are involved in. This is more of a one-sided piece. And you'll notice that unlike fighting, there is a piece around a police referral. And so I'm just going to check fighting. I don't, I didn't think I remembered fighting, including a police referral. Maybe it does. Let me just make sure I'm. So you'll see that there is not a police referral in fighting, but in assault, because there is a legal definition of assault, it includes the police referral. So there are a few things burglar and trespassing, for example, those are two that sound similar until you really get into the, the details of the difference. In this case, I think there's a similar difference between assault and fighting.
Would it make sense to show the differentiation in the description a little bit? And somehow say, you know, assault as, I'm just thinking for the average user reading this, they would have the same confusion that I had, you know? What's the difference between assault and fighting? And maybe just something that helps people who are reading it understand the difference. Again, just a few words.
Okay, well, we can take a look and see if there's something we can do to further differentiate it.
Matt, does assault sometimes lead to fighting? Would that be a scenario?
Um, I think it'd be the other way around. I think fighting could potentially sometimes lead to assault.
Okay.
And thankfully, we have, we don't have a ton of that, right? But we, we do have some of it and we need to make sure that we've got that differentiation.
Then I have a general question, because we have first occurrence, second occurrence. And I'm wondering if the occurrences only apply to that category? Or if the occurrences apply cross category, if that makes sense?
Great question. So I think if you look, I think it's on page, let me just find here. Okay, so if you look at page twenty-two. So I would say in general, the first occurrence, second occurrence is independent within each potential area. But what you'll see is on page twenty-two at the end, it does provide multiple or chronic violations and unique situations. And what that does is it, it talks about how serious behaviors that have accumulated excess or several referrals for serious behavior may just be disciplined in light of the student's overall record. So in general, for lower level kinds of pieces, I would follow the first occurrence, second occurrence, third occurrence. But if our building administrators are seeing multiple or chronic offenses across the board, they are able to levy more substantial discipline in light of the student's overall record. We try to avoid stacking to the best of our ability. But there are, there are times where those unique circumstances for making sure we can maintain an orderly school environment are necessary to consider more substantial discipline for students who are, are struggling or who are repeat, repeating those things in several different occurrences across different components of the handbook.
I, that's actually a good answer. I like that answer.
I aim to please.
Because I couldn't figure out which way I would go with it. So you have the best of both worlds with that. Then on page sixteen, we, it discusses harassment. And again, I just want to bring up the, you know, the idea of online harassment. So possibly there could be some online phrasing that is added to the harassment as well. And I'm actually to my last question. So, so I was looking at the page ten, we have alcohol or chemicals. And on page nineteen, there was a, I don't know. Another drug related one, tobacco smoking. I'm wondering where do we put marijuana and THC into it? And whether now with the changes in the law, whether we need to be more expressly putting them, marijuana and THC in, does it go under tobacco or does it go under the chemical use?
So what I would suggest under the, I, I would suggest initially that just to be really clear, the law is not changing for students who we serve. So I would, in terms of the possession use, et cetera. So I don't think there's any need to change the student citizenship handbook. Because marijuana is exactly the same for our students after August first as it was before August first. There's no change in how students handle it. Now, to be fair, there's going to be some other things that we do that law does say that we are going to need to provide preventative or some kind of instruction. We're waiting to see what that looks like from the state. Probably similar to what we've done in terms of alcohol or tobacco use. But I appreciate you bringing that up Amy, because I think a lot of people in the community probably wonder that same thing. But I think it's really important to note that for the students that we serve, there is no difference in how we handle it after August first as opposed to before August first.
And I understand that, but we do not name it at all.
We also don't name other items that are not, are prohibited.
But it's no longer a controlled substance.
I, I would argue that it is in this case.
Is it a narcotic? Ben, did you want to add?
Sure. Having recently taught, taught a class on this subject, I can, I mean, it is a federally controlled substance still, but it's been decriminalized in Minnesota. So it would be, I think if you were going to add it, I would add just a phrase around cannabis under the same classification as alcohol, because the legal age of consumption is the same twenty-one for both of those substances. So I think it, it could be worth a call out because it is, it kind of falls in that gray area. And I would just refer to it cannabis and cannabinoid containing products, something along those lines. Because it isn't strictly a narcotic and in some instances it's a controlled substance and some it's not. Especially if it's a hemp derived cannabinoid, then it is not a controlled substance, but more detailed than you want. But I think we could capture it here pretty easily, a little tweak.
Thank you.
Good suggestion. And we will, I will also just, we'll make a call to Terry Morrow from M S B A. Because I think that that's an important piece. M S B A is updating their items as part of this. And we know that they're having their attorneys look at what this means as well. So we'll certainly run that language past him to see, does that seem to make sense?
Thank you. And I'm done.
Good suggestions. Thank you, Amy. Okay. And we're moving on to item C, and that is the fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit engagement letter. And Val will present on that.
Thank you. So this is an annual engagement letter that we get from Clifton Larson Allen. And this year, I just wanted to call out a couple of things. This is their first year doing it electronically, requiring electronic signature. And so they're using a new system. So on page, I think it's eleven of the document has our actual fee structure. You are welcome to read through all of the. You are welcome to read through all of the things, but it just outlines all of the different things that they're going to do and that, um, the district will do in response to complete the audit. But the fee structure is really what we're looking at, um, today. So I just wanted to call out, there's a bunch of bullets underneath where it has their professional fee. I reached out and, uh, they were not able to delete those because we did not see a 15% increase. That was what they were recommending for clients. And I actually called Craig Falken Hagan and articulated the reasons why I didn't think that that was necessary for our district. So actually the 19 six is, um, a 0% increase. That is the same fee we had last year. There is an increase in the per audit of federal program. That is about a thousand dollars per program. We tend to have two or three programs depending. Um, with the COVID money, it's been a little bit more intense. And so that's obviously why they're doing that. And then I just wanted to call out, there's an additional fee for the SABITA. And that is the new GASB standard that we're going to be required to implement. SABITA is the software-based instructional technology agreements. There's actually not a D in it. I don't know why they have that in there, but, um, so we're going to be working through, um, effectively looking at all of our software subscriptions and making sure that we're capitalizing and booking those appropriately in accordance with GASB. So I just wanted to, um, basically say the bullets, you can ignore completely. Um, that was not something they don't all reference, um, was actually happening in the fee structure. But otherwise it's pretty, uh, status quo, all the same services, um, that we've had in the past. Just, uh, slightly different way to look at the fee, but the 19 six is actually the same exact base fee that they had last year. So, um, if you have any questions, I will gladly answer them.
Thank you so much. Questions, board members? Did you want to make another comment?
Do not.
Okay, great. Thanks, Val. Right. We have item D, superintendent operations and strategic plan update.
So a few items, uh, this evening. First of all, legislative update again, I think we're going to be giving legislative updates about, uh, the items that were passed, uh, this session for some time. And I think hopefully that's mostly going to be good. Uh, I just did in the packet, I did just link, the two documents that we're seeing, uh, in various legislative updates across the state. The one is a slide deck, 104 slides from the Minnesota Department of Education. I did ask Ado Shuni, who is the Director of Governmental Relations for MDE, who is a Carlton alumni, by the way, if this was the new record for the number of slides needed to summarize a legislative session. And he said, yes, the previous record was 80 slides. And so yeah, I think that just shows how much more, uh, that the legislature passed this year. We've also included the School Boards Association slide deck that they have been using in their presentations. In the document, I did give you just a snapshot. I didn't expect you to be able to read it. You can see it in the slide deck from MSBA, but the image that is to the right here is a Gantt chart. And what it does is it shows, you're seeing that there's colors that go across. And what that's indicating is MSBA is working right now on identifying every piece of legislation that pass that affects schools and then aligning it to when is the implementation date. You know, so there were some things that were immediately expected to be implemented upon the governor's signature. There are other things that started, one item started on May 28th, others start on July 1st, some start on August 1st. Others don't start until a date in the future. So MSBA is trying to help school districts identify, what are the things that we have to focus on right now? So that we can make sure that we're getting in alignment with the new legislation, um, and be able to implement those programs, uh, to the best of our ability as we move ahead. So that was just a visual to accompany to show there's going to be a lot to work on, uh, for some time. So again, we, I've reiterated the significant structural changes in school finance, which I've gone through before. Also just want to share that there are, as we said, there's dozens that will go into effect. You know, this year, next year, over the next several years. And then finally, I want you to be prepared because there are 27 MSBA model policies that will be impacted by legislation. So some of these are simply repointing to a new chapter of statute based on how things were reshuffled. And other things will be more substantial. Um, as you know, this board has authorized the policy committee and, uh, and Anita and I, if there are, uh, a policy that is affected by state statute changes that simply are non-consequential, we just can bring those forward in the consent, uh, agenda. And we don't even bring them to the policy committee, basically, right? They just move forward. So we're staying up to date with the legislation. Again, that's a, that's only really the tangential kinds of redirects to a different chapter because of the way that they reshuffled the numbering or something like that. Things that have more substance will come through the policy committee, but anything that's directly related to state statute change. So I just don't want board members to be surprised if in July or August, they see some policies in the consent agenda. We will of course let you know that, but it's a, a matter of just making sure that we have the latest up to date statutory references. But 27 of them, that is no joke, right? There's a lot of stuff that's happening there. So again, um, just want to, we'll keep updating you on legislation as we move ahead. And I thought it would be useful for you to see the slide decks that MSBA and MDE are using as they travel the state. I've seen four different legislative wrap-up presentations by three different groups. And every single time I learn something new, and I think I read pretty well, but there's always something that I've said, oh, I didn't know about that. And many of the times it's like, oh, all right, that's good. Uh, so it's just an, it's a, an interesting time to be integrating new legislation. Again, I think most of it's going to be, uh, very positive, but we're just, there's some work to get it implemented. Um, I did want to highlight in my report, uh, the fact that we have a number of really great staff members who are retiring at the end of the school year here. And so we just want to congratulate educators David Piper, Paul Owlesley, Kathleen Beck, Diane Frederickson, Denise Halverson, Elizabeth Valentine, Kurt Mickelson, Sudan Idenschenk, and Cheryl Hall, who are finishing their careers with Norfield Public Schools. Now, don't be surprised if some of these folks come back as retirees over time to help us in certain, uh, other ways. But you know, when I look at that list, um, we are very fortunate that we do have people who seek employment here. And when they get employment here, they stay here. And so we talk a lot about recruiting and retaining. We do have a substantial number of people who come and stay. And so for those folks, we're just so grateful for the work that they did in a variety of positions. We're thankful for the difference that they made for kids. Each of their buildings did something, you know, for the retirees, uh, in their facilities, but we just want to give them some public recognition here and we thank them for their work. The next part of the update is, I just showed you some, I think some pretty cool pictures. Uh, Norfield High School Principal Shane Byer started a, what we hope is a new tradition this year of what's called the parade of graduates. So graduating seniors got to go to the elementary schools that they attended in the district, including Prairie Creek, including Nurse Strand, um, Nurse Strand Charter School, St. Dominic. Uh, and so really, as you can see in the pictures, they went with cap and gown and they got to parade through. It was very exciting. It's exciting for those graduates to see and go back to their elementary school. It's exciting for elementary students to see kids who had gone to their elementary school or are crossing the stage. We think that that gives them a positive future narrative about what they are able to do. And I do want to point out, I called, uh, John Benjamin from Benjamin Bus about this concept because we'd have seven buses to pull this off. And, uh, you know, we did pay a very modest fee to cover the driver's, um, wage. But other than that, John donated the transportation. So I think that that's important. Benjamin Bus has been a good partner. Typically buses like that would be, would be cost prohibitive for us to be able to do something like this. But John was generous and said, yep, we're happy to donate that transportation, just like he's donated transportation for the ALC Boundary Waters canoe trip for the last few years. So we just want to thank Benjamin Bus for their work. Thank Shane for his work to get it organized. And thanks for our graduates to be excited about. I think that that's a really good place to be. Couple of more items to highlight is that, um, we like to highlight, we're continuing to want to highlight these really positive things about our partnerships. And so, uh, very pleased to share with you the Dr. Valerie Fox, who is a visiting professor from physics and astronomy at Carlton, has presented this spring, both at Norfield High School and Norfield Middle School. Now, Dr. Fox has worked for NASA. Um, she specifically worked on the Mars Rover Project Opportunity. And she has come, you know, and, and basically provided this really interesting lecture for both high school students and middle school students. And I understand many great questions, especially from our middle school students. So if we think about innovation, we think about science and getting middle school kids interested in it by having someone who worked on these NASA projects is pretty impressive. So we thank Carlton College for their generosity and for their great partnership. Also wanted to highlight, um, as you know, we continue to work to increase our, excuse me, I'm just going to get another drink over here. I've been talking too much tonight. And no one laughed out loud there. That was very impressive. That's, that's discipline, people. As you know, we've been working to further integrate ag education, uh, into our curriculum. And so for several years at Greenville Park, we have had a farm day. Um, that farm day has now been expanded to Spring Creek this year. Students from FFA program, the FFA program, both Norfield and Randolph students, local professionals, they organize activities. As you see from the photos are really interesting. There's things from, you know, the small animals that you would typically see at a farm day to, there was, uh, something on bees. Very exciting for kids to see that. Um, large, heavy equipment, a model farm that kids could look at and see. So some really interesting things. And we want to thank, uh, Tiffany Courtbine from Greenville Park and Rich Gugusberg from Spring Creek, who helped coordinate the events at the site level. And of course, you know, all the folks from, uh, the FFA and, um, the Randolph Ag Program. As we bring ag back to Norfield next year, you're going to see more of these kind of ag ed things integrated into our curriculum. And then, uh, finally for, to the relief of many people, uh, this will be the final superintendent's update in this format. And just want to explain to the people at the table here and the community why we're changing this. So the first time that we use this framework was in April of 2020. And since then, at every meeting, we've had some version of this report. In the early days of that update, it was really to try to educate the board and the public about what seemed to be the hourly changes in guidance about the pandemic, state changes, responses, et cetera. Then it evolved to where it was the mechanism that we gave, what were the latest case rates, you know, within individual school buildings, um, updates on vaccination, other things. And then as it continued to evolve, it evolved into a, a general report on the strategic plan. And that was a little bit of COVID, a little bit of strategic plan pieces. And as we've really continued the report, it really has started to take things from other parts of the agenda. So for example, several of the items here tonight, the farm day, the graduation parade, the retirees, for example, those would have been things that we typically would have put in our announcements and recognitions. Now, as we add more to announcements and recognitions, we may bolster that part of the agenda a bit. We love being able to provide the photos and things like that for people to be able to see in the board packet. But there's a number of these things that I think sometimes can get lost in this report that really are announcements and recognitions. And then there are other things that really typically should be standalone reports. So if I'm a member of the community and I'm interested in, in seeing about the legislative update, but I just simply see the superintendent's update and it doesn't list what's, what are the components of that? I think some people might, they, they don't know that we're talking about some of the things that have been included in the report. It's not any effort at, you know, obfuscating or not, you know, being transparent about what we're talking about. But we're now at a point where I think it makes sense to end this particular approach and then separate it back out to things like announcements or recognitions or standalone reports in which other people can come and provide some of those, um, items. And so, uh, I'm thrilled frankly to say we no longer need this particular item because the, when we started it in this way, it was not only necessary, uh, it was critical that we were using this vehicle to provide these updates. So, uh, it does feel like this is, um, closing a chapter to a certain extent, as we are in a number of other things related to, um, the virus that shall may not, not be named anymore, but it really is a good spot of moving ahead. And so this will be the last report that I provide, uh, in this manner. And we'll go back to what we would call regular operating procedure, which is a good thing. So I thank people for their engagement and their positive feedback about the report and we will move forward.
Okay. Thank you so much for your update there. Are there any questions or comments from the board members? Okay, Jenny and then Amy.
Thank you, Claudia. Um, Dr. Hillman, I just had a question about your superintendent update. The, uh, reversing it back to the way it was prior to, um, is some of the information that you have published in your updates to the board also included in your superintendent or district update, I should say, that goes out to parents?
Yes. So if people read, there are times where I copy and paste things, right? From both ways, mostly from the board piece to the parent update.
Okay. So then will you continue, um, using this information that you would have normally put in our superintendent update to board members to the district update to parents?
Absolutely. So things like, things that would have been housed, so for example, with some of the announcements and recognitions kinds of things, those points of pride, as Amy would call them, those kinds of things will always be included, you know, in the parent updates as well. Not all of them, right? But some significant pieces. And then if there are parts that would have been part of this update that are standalone item, we can also highlight those things for parents as well. So the intent isn't to reduce the amount of information that we're providing in that parent update. Um, it's just how it's structured in the board meeting, if that makes sense.
Yes, I appreciate that. Um, you're going to continue communicating a lot of these announcements and updates because not every parent reads the whole board packet.
Absolutely.
So, um, so those type announcements and things like that, you know, they might not be getting, but, um, if you're going to continue putting the information into the district update, then that'd be a great idea.
Good. Okay, Amy.
Uh, first, Dr. Hillman, thank you for three plus years of these updates. I think they really did add a nice, um, facet to our meetings. And I can understand why you're moving forward and changing that up and, and, uh, I think that makes sense. Um, I want to follow up on what Jenny said about parent updates, because I don't get a parent update. So I'm hoping that you'll think of people like me as you're creating the parent updates and making sure some of the information comes back to non-parents like Claudia. I also wanted to say, you know, photos are my language. So please, please keep, find ways of incorporating photos in whatever way you can. Because I think, um, you know, photos are worth more than a thousand words. And in fact, I was so excited on this farm update to see one of my favorite Norfield farmers. The man in the green shirt is Caleb of rotational roots. And since he was kind enough to volunteer for us, I'm going to say, everybody go to the Saturday Riverwalk Market and buy your food from Caleb at rotational roots. So that's okay, right? He didn't pay me for that. Um, so, uh, I also wanted to say, I love the, um, parade of graduates. And I think this was a great start this year. I, I think that they could add a few little things like me, I don't, maybe they did this, but visiting their classroom, um, that they had, or maybe a few of their classrooms or seeing their teachers, if their teachers are still around for the graduates. But I'm sure it'll evolve naturally, but what a
Use improvement.
What a fun idea. What, very, very fun. And the last thing I wanted to say was actually, I, uh, had heard that one of our former board members is the person who connected us up with the NASA scientists. And what a great coup for our school district to be able to have a NASA scientist come and inspire our students or even just talk to them. So, um, so that board member, former board member is Tom Branier. And he's here. I wanted to acknowledge his great work on the behalf of the district, make that happen.
Great partnerships.
Yeah, it's been great. And, and Tom is so good about letting us know if there are those kinds of scientific pieces at Carlton. And we have other folks from San, and as we've, we've been talking again with both colleges as they are starting to be able to have more interaction, you know, with the community as they are also emerging from some of the challenges that colleges have had during the pandemic. And we've always been really blessed with these great opportunities to have things that we normally couldn't have had in any other community because the colleges are here. So we're grateful to start seeing these kinds of things return and we're grateful for those partners in the community who think of us to make sure, let's make it, make sure there's an explicit connection. And I want to point out, there was a typo in that to begin with, and we did update the report in the table file.
Okay.
Thank you.
You for all the great comments. Other comments, Robert?
Well, I just want to, uh, join Amy and others in thanking and just a couple of comments on thanking our retirees. Uh, there's some names there that are really going to be missed by the state. There's some names there that are really going to be missed by this district. And then what, what great things, what great events have happened at our elementary schools, the Parade of Graduates and Farm Days. As someone who, who will be getting the, the parent update, the family update for a number of years still. I, I know that mine came home excited about these events. I heard about both of them. And the little lettuce seed they planted, my son came today and said, I don't think it was meant to grow in the desert. And it dried up a bit, but these were both wonderful events.
Thanks, Robert. Anyone else comment or question? Dr. Hillman, can you talk about the Parade of Graduates? What happened in that program, you know?
So my understanding is that students, you know, were able to board a bus to go to the elementary school that they attended. And they simply walked through the building in, I think it was a little bit different at each facility. For example, I know at some buildings, the students were out in the hallway cheering them on, high fives, et cetera. I know at one building, the building principal explicitly invited the graduates to go to the playground to be able to have an opportunity to see, you know, to be on the, they got some great photos of that. So little bit different, you know, here and there, a number of excitement as teachers recognizing students who they had had in their classrooms. And I think it was just really a joyous experience.
Sure. Thank you so much. Okay, item C is the consent grouping. And as a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Okay, move by Ben. Is that it? Hi, Amy. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is items for individual action, and we have one item, and that is the policy committee recommendation. I'll take a motion first and then we can discuss. Is there a motion to approve updates to the procedures for policy 516, the student medication, medication policy? By Robert? Okay. By Ben. Dr. Hillman, do you want to make any comments?
The only comment there, we had a little bit of a discussion at the board table about the possibility of including aspirin at the last board meeting. I just want to point out that after further review, it is, aspirin is not something that we were advised to include in the policy due to some connections with childhood syndrome, Ries syndrome. And so the ibuprofen and the acetaminophen is what we're calling it. But we did do some additional work based upon board members' questions. And we've been advised to leave that out at this point.
Any questions or comments? Robert?
I just want to note and thank that we included, since, since this was first heard, we're very explicit now that this prior written authorization from students, parents, guardians is, is required because that's, that's how this was framed and now we have it right now. So I think that's very important.
Any other questions or comments? Very well. We have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Items for information, number eight, we have the end of the year enrollment report. It was, it's in the table file.
Kim, I'm going to plug this in. There you go. So you'll see that this is the end of the year enrollment report. You'll see the final one. Those are numbers that are hot off the press. It takes, last school day was on Friday. It takes a couple of days to make sure we have everything sorted out. You'll see fairly similar to last month. We did finish the year at 3718 of the full-time only students. And so that is where we ended. And you'll see, just you can see where the modest changes happened. Few buildings that had some increase in students, some that stayed exactly the same. The most substantial reduction was in, in five students from portage in that end of the year component there. So that is the enrollment report for the end of the year. And we'd be happy to do what we can to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Board members, questions? Hey, Amy?
Could you explain more about five students from portage? Wouldn't they make it till the end of the year?
I, I cannot tell you what those individual circumstances were.
But they all, did they, yeah, they, they left the district in one way or another.
Yes, it, it could be a variety of different things. It could be that they may have transitioned to a credit recovery program. I, as I look across the, where those were, you'll see that the most substantial was in grade 11. So that could be a shift to students. You'll see in, in May, it was 15 down to eight. There are some increases in some other, I don't know increases, but it does look like that that grade 11 was the area where, and that could be that students are already shifting under the ALC umbrella at that point. I can't say that's speculation.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Jenny?
Thank you, Claudia. Dr. Hillman, I, I just have a question on the enrollment report regarding the ALC numbers. So in the beginning of the school year, we were at 63 total, I think. And then at the end of the year, it was 216. Do you happen to know, I sort of two, a two-part question. So one, is that typical that you see that high of a fluctuation at the ALC in previous years?
Yes, we typically see it start now, remember that area learning center part can, includes two components, right? Includes the students who are there every day, right? The students who are taking their courses there. And then it also can include students who might be doing one or two courses through credit recovery. So it is not uncommon to see a substantial increase in our ALC numbers from the beginning of the year through the end of the year.
Okay. And then also, the second part is in this particular school year, do you happen to know if that increase had anything to do with any non-resident students transferring here specifically for, to attend ALC?
I don't have that breakdown right here in front of me, but I think Val looks like she does.
I don't, but I think something that I've found helpful in looking at this report is the first page of it. If you look at the ALC section, the full-time is 65. So we started with 63 and ended with 65. I prefer to look there because it does look like 216 is kind of a shocking jump. But you can see very clearly that most of it's the independent study credit recovery piece. And as Dr. Hillman said, that's very typical to see that increase.
Okay, thank you, Val.
And just to be clear for what board members, when we say this, it's actually the second page in your packet, but I'm highlighting it right here, which I was on the screen for a moment there before. But it's in that part of the report where it's showing elementary class sizes. And so it's just below the bridge water numbers and it will show you the difference between full-time, part-time and independent study. And we will certainly get the breakdown of how many of those students are open enrolling into the district for the area learning center. My perception is that we still see a number of students who are open enrolling from other districts into the ALC. It has, I don't know, we will see how that final number, in the past few years, we've seen more substantial open enrollment from other districts for our area learning center program. But once we get, we will get the annual, we will look at that breakdown. We can certainly bring that back.
Good questions. Anyone else? Thank you so much for that report. All right, item nine is our future meetings, and we have regular meetings coming up on Mondays, July 10th, August 14th and August 28th, all at 6:00 PM right here in the district boardroom. And that's all the business that we have for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? Move by Jen. I can buy Jenny. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries and we are adjourned.